Welcome and good evening all to the Planning Board's Public Forum on MBTA Communities. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and begin by introducing the Planning Board members and the staff this evening.
Great. First of you, would you like to go ahead and introduce yourself? Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Maggie Uthiel, Member.
Sean Fahey, Member.
Jim Davis, Member.
And Meredith Hall, serving as Chair. With us, we have our staff members. Cheyenne.
Cheyenne Fraser, Assistant Director of Planning.
And Julia.
Julia Getman.
Great. Thank you. And to lead the presentation this evening, many of you have been following the presentations, but we have with us Matthew, if you'd like to introduce yourself, from UTIL.
Sure. I'm Matthew Latell. I'm Principal UTIL. I am joined virtually by Associate Principal Zoe Mueller, who's been helping with this project and really running it. She has COVID, so she's going to stay in the background, but she'll be there if we need her. We've been helping the town with the 3A compliance scenarios since, I believe, 2023. We helped with the first scenario that went to town meeting in '23, and we re-engaged last year to come up with alternative scenarios moving forward that we'll go through tonight. Would you like me to start?
And yes, and I just want to say, these are not final scenarios, so I don't want anyone panicking if you see something that you're concerned about, that you want to comment on. These, this is sort of a point in time where the Planning Board is with our different planning initiatives. Just even since our subsequent meeting, there were some things that were being tweaked. We're pretty far along in the process, so these are really more minor things that we're looking at right now. But as you'll see, it's a complicated process with the model, and when one change is made, it affects a whole different district. So there are certain things that we will need to be in compliance. So just so you know, this is not the final final, but we wanted to come to you to get public input as soon as we felt like we had something ready to move forward. So just to make that clear. So yes, Matthew, go ahead. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So some of you may have been involved in this process. Some may be new. I think this is a good juncture to do a quick review of the requirements of the law and where we stand in terms of timeline, an introduction to some of the sub-districts that we're considering. Some of them are carryovers from before, some of them are new. And then the Planning Board has asked us to look at three scenarios. So the first is the one that went to town meeting in '23, the Rapid Transit Community Plan. The Planning Board has asked us to look at two what we call hypothetical alternative plans that meet different requirements. One is the Hypothetical Adjacent Community Plan, and the other is, we call it, the Statute Plan. And I will explain what those are. The majority of our time has been spent on the first one, but again, the Planning Board wanted us to explore these other potential pathways. Next slide, please. Okay, so I will, as best I can, I will go through the sort of the requirements of the law and the background. The MBTA Communities Section 3A law requires towns and municipalities with access to public transit to create a multifamily zoning district. There are three basic requirements. A minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, that a certain number of those units be located within a half a mile of commuter rail station or a subway station or a ferry terminal. And then this last piece is, we call flexible. It's that these units cannot be restricted to the elderly or certain, you know, individual populations, that they needed to be suitable for families. The statute itself asks for a district of a reasonable size. The regulations that are attached to that end up defining that. And so for the various different kinds of communities that are categorized here, rapid transit, commuter rail, adjacent, those requirements are different. Milton has been classified by the state as a rapid transit community because of the proximity of the red line. And that results in a sort of minimum multi-unit capacity. As a percentage of the housing units, we call it 25%. And then associated with that is a certain minimum land area that's required for this district. And for Milton, that's 50 acres. So we will talk a little bit more in detail about that, but you can see from the map the various different kinds of communities that are being asked to meet this requirement. Again, some are rapid transit around Boston, and then you get into adjacent and commuter rail communities. Next slide. So, as you, many of you know, the law was challenged. It went to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court upheld the statute. There were, but the guidelines themselves, the regulations, as we call them, were put into a little bit of a limbo. There was an emergency order that sort of held them to, but they were sort of finalized and ratified and approved, final regulations approved just recently on April 14. One thing that came of this was that there is essentially a new deadline for compliance because of all the legal activity. It's moved it up to July. So July is the, July 14 is the deadline for the town to apply, district compliant application. Next slide. So the Attorney General has issued a warning, and some of these are in the law itself, that if towns do not comply, that civil action, civil enforcement action is possible. And then as well as potential loss of funds from a certain list of programs that include Housing Choice, Local Capital Project Fund, MassWorks, things of that nature. And then there's another sort of long list of discretionary grant programs that might also be impacted. Next slide. This is a map that shows the various states of compliance for all the MBTA communities in the Commonwealth. Some have already submitted compliant zoning districts. Some are in compliance because they're in the process and they've registered their intent to do so. But there are, as of right now, four non-compliant communities that include Milton, but also Middleton, Marshfield, and Halifax. Next slide. Okay, I will try my best to summarize some of the requirements to maybe demystify some of the rule set. The law requires communities with rail access or adjacent to rail access to have at least one multifamily zoning district. Multifamily means either three units or two units in two buildings. And another key part of this is that it's required to be as of right. In other words, the allowance can't be subject to a special permit. You can require site plan review, but there needs to be a sort of definitive as-of-right entitlement to that zoning allowances. There are a few sort of important requirements, which is you are not allowed to require ground floor commercial and no restrictions on age, number, or size of bedrooms or the number of occupants. And the intention there, in the text that's on the lower left, is to, again, not use other kinds of restrictions to be an impediment to the enabling of multifamily housing. Next slide. Important definitions. I mentioned the first one, multifamily housing. It's one building with three units or two buildings on the same lot, each with two units. And then gross density is a very important concept. It's basically units per acre, and the baseline for most communities, for all communities, is 15 units per acre. But it includes everything within the district, including public rights of way, recreational space, civic space. It's not that all of that area can be developed, but in terms of how that gross density is measured, it's sort of the, it's the entire package. It does exclude wetlands and non-developable sort of floodplain areas. But for the most part, that is how they define gross density. Next slide. There was an amendment to the regulations sort of halfway through this process, which did allow a certain amount of your district to contain what's called mandatory mixed use. In other words, that would be a district where you could require ground floor uses to be commercial or retail or restaurant, things of that nature. There was a limit to it, how it could be deployed. It can't be more than 25% of your minimum capacity. In other words, there's a limited amount to which you can use that to reach your unit capacity. And the second important thing is that those units and those districts can't contribute to your acreage requirement or your overall density calculations. So they're just contributing to the sort of the unit count piece. Next slide, please. A few more rules. So 50 acres is the sort of minimum size of the district. It can be split into multiple separate sub-districts so long as each of those separate chunks are a minimum of five acres. The other rule is that at least one of the districts needs to be big enough to represent 50% of all the other, you know, of the entire district itself. So you need one big piece, and then you need, then the rest can be sort of spread around. The other condition is that half of your area and the capacity needs to be within a half a mile of transit stations. In Milton, the formulas that the state has put forth require quite specifically a minimum of 2,461 units of zoned multifamily capacity and an average of at least 50 units per acre. And again, 50% of that has to be within a half mile of transit station. Very, very important to understand that that capacity in terms of the unit count is a theoretical amount. It is not an obligation to develop that housing. It is not an obligation to displace any existing uses. It is simply a kind of mathematical model of what was, what would be possible, given the parameters of the zoning, if all of those parcels were vacant and everyone would build as of right. So again, not a prediction of what will happen, but it is a theoretical sort of numerical target. Next slide, please. I think we're missing a slide. Maybe if you go back. If you go back one more. Okay, never mind. I'll keep going if you go to the next slide. Oh. So Milton's transit station area here is represented in two shades. You see the orange area are those parts of the town that are within a half a mile of the red line extension. And then the darker sort of purply color is areas that are within a half a mile of the commuter rail station. And this second adjacent scenarios community that we were asked to look into reacts primarily to the commuter rail station adjacencies. The major 25% or rapid transit community scenario is responding primarily to that Mattapan Trolley area that's depicted in mostly sort of orange. Next slide, please. So this is a sort of quick summary of some of the requirements that apply to each of these scenarios. As I mentioned, the state has designated Milton as a rapid transit community. That comes with obligations listed here in that left column. 15 units an acre, 25% designated housing stock, 2,460 units, 50% within that Mattapan Trolley station area. And then again, 50% is your sort of minimum sort of major zone, and then 50 acres. The adjacent community scenario, which is a different standard, which applies to communities that do not have rapid transit and do not have a commuter rail station, but are adjacent to a community with a commuter rail station, the requirements are different. It's still 15 units an acre density, but the housing stock number, in other words, the minimum number of units is much less. It's at 10%. So this is based on how the state has sort of categorized the various sort of responsibilities of different kinds of communities based on their proximity to public transportation. So that number is 985. 50% of it, and by the way, in an adjacent community, there is no obligation to be within a half a mile of the stations. That geographic requirement does not apply. But you still need at least one acre that's 50% of the total size of the district, and you still need 50 acres. This third scenario was something that was asked of us a little while ago. We call it the Hypothetical Statute Plan. So the law consists of the statute, which is the literal wording of the law. That wording refers to regulations, which is where all the detailed guidance comes from. We were asked to prepare a scenario that disregarded the regulations and looked just specifically at the letter of the law, which is fairly brief. I will talk about it in more detail, but as far as we can tell, all it's telling us to do is to achieve 15 units of an acre and to have 100% of our land within the station area. There are no sort of express capacity requirements. The size of the district is categorized as reasonable. There isn't some specificity there. So we've done what we can to interpret it, and we can share those sort of results with you. Okay. Next slide. Okay, this is the slide I thought was missing, but it's not. So how do we determine these capacities? You're going to see a lot of numbers associated with these scenarios. The state has supplied a fairly complex Excel workbook model in which you put all the various parameters of your zoning, so setbacks, parking requirements, the number of floors you might allow, floor area ratio, minimum lot size. There's a whole bunch of parameters that can restrict and shape development in a certain way. The, this mathematical model takes all the existing, has the data of all the existing parcels in terms of their sizes, and it computes essentially an estimate of how much error you have to develop once you've put in all those rules, right? And it tallies those up, and it gives you a computation of how many units there are, and by extension, how many units per acre you are. So these, this is the sort of the model. If I refer to the model, it's a very intense, multi-page spreadsheet that helps us to comply that. The model itself is the mechanism to, for the state to ascertain compliance. So the Excel workbook is, it's locked. We can't change the parameters. It's a kind of ironclad computer of sorts. Again, those estimates are not a prediction of development. They're really just a kind of theoretical or hypothetical tally of what is, might generally be possible under certain kinds of zoning. Next slide, please. It's important to talk about the schedule. We are right now at that orange dot that says 417 Public Forum. As Meredith mentioned, you can see we've been meeting with the Planning Board with some frequency with the hope of iterating more and more kinds of refinements and options and testing things. You'll see this is a very multivariable kind of problem, but the Planning Board has asked us to turn over every stone. And this was an important moment in time that required, I think, a sort of a pause, an official sort of gathering of people and getting public input because the clock is ticking. The final application to the state is due on July 14. There is, I believe, a town meeting planned for June 16, at which this vote will take place. And in order for that to happen, we back up to May 16 in terms of a date for delivering, producing and delivering the final warrant. So there's a sort of parallel thing that's happening here. You'll see the state offers a pre, they offer a review of compliance for compliance before a response is submitted to them. That 190-day state timeframe is sort of begun a little bit. We understand that they might be willing to work with us to review something on a shorter timeframe. I believe they began to review the last submission. I'm not sure they ever issued a final compliance on it, but they're starting from a place of familiarity. And we've been in communication with them as well about some of the decisions that we're making. Next slide, please. Okay, I'd like to first go over all of the sub-districts that we're using in these various scenarios, particularly the rapid transit and adjacent community scenarios. You'll see they're all color-coded in various ways. Those of you who are familiar with the 2023 plan will notice that there have been some sort of new districts added to the south on Randolph Ave, as well as the Paper Mill Site on Truman Parkway over to the west there. The bulk of the sort of middle of the district along Elliot Street and around Mattapan Station, those are largely still there. And then you'll notice in East Milton that we are still retaining Granite Avenue North. I'll let Cheyenne plug in here. Is that you or me?
No, I think it's you.
Is there a power cord?
Knock on that door. The IT guys can probably help you.
Come out of the closet.
Are you proud? There's a power cord there.
Power cord is better. Have to get used to that.
They unplug it again? Great.
There we go. Thank you. Sure. Thank you. My arm just ran out of batteries. So this is an overview of the various districts. We will get into them in more detail and how they're deployed in sort of different scenarios. Next slide, please. I'll walk through sort of each one. We've prepared a kind of a more aerial view detail to show you a little bit more detail so you can really see what these districts are. These are the Milton Station districts, which consist of Milton Station West. It wraps around like this, something we call Milton Station Bridge, and then Milton Station East on this side. This is fully in the transit area and is the one area where we are proposing to exercise that mandatory mixed use aspect that I discussed. There is a desire, I think, to retain some of the retail character of this neighborhood, and this seemed like a good fit. Next slide. This is the Mattapan Station area. There's an existing multifamily here as well, and some additional smaller lots have been added. This is an area in which I believe we're proposing 5,000 minimum square foot parcels with one unit for the first 5,000 and then 1,000 square feet for the additional. It was a balanced way to navigate sort of connecting a much larger multifamily parcel with some of these smaller parcels. Next slide. Adjacent to that is the Blue Hills Parkway Corridor. This is a district where we're proposing a 6,000 square foot minimum parcel size. And you'll see when we get to the dimensional tables that a lot of the dimensional parameters for this district resemble some of the parameters that we're proposing for Elliot Street as well. Next slide. And then this is the Elliot Street Corridor, which you will see is actually broken into tiers based on the various lot sizes, but it is fully in the transit station. It provides the sort of bulk of the compliance for the access and proximity to transit. It also provides that, remember, we have to have at least one district that is at least 50% of the overall area. This plays an important role in that. And it also helps to connect some of the Milton Station areas to Mattapan and Blue Hills Parkway as well. You'll notice that it's sort of cut off right here where we get to Milton Station, but it also excludes the historic district that you see outlined in blue here as well. But generally, it's organized along Elliot Street with more or less a sort of a thousand-foot sort of catchment from the various trolley stations. Next slide. Granite Avenue North is probably the most remote of these parcels. You're probably all familiar with it. It's where you go under 93 towards Dorchester. Those of you who may be familiar with earlier schemes may remember that this parcel, Granite Avenue South, which is, belongs to the DOT, was also part of the scenario. That has been eliminated from these scenarios for a couple of reasons. One is its eligibility. For putting in our plan was the fact that it had been mentioned in your housing production plan. That production plan has expired. In addition, MassDOT has indicated that they do not have any plans to sell that parcel or convert it to residential use. Previously, Granite Avenue North and South Previously, Granite Avenue North and South were considered a "contiguous" district because HLC allowed us to interpret it that way, because there's really no other way to connect. In conversations with HLC, they've indicated that they would allow a district less than five acres in this condition here because really there was no practical way for it to abut or connect to any other parcel. So we are including it there, a little bit with an asterisk, but based on a relatively productive conversation with HLC. Next slide, please. The Paper Mill site is a new site that has been added. It's a site on which there's a current overlay, I believe, a brownfield overlay that already allows for 90 units. It's a challenging site. Obviously, there's difficult access to it. And developers have not yet figured out a way to do it economically. This is also another site where HLC is allowing us to, or at least entertaining the idea of a parcel that is less than five acres. And again, for the same reasons, because it can't be sort of reasonably considered contiguous with anything else. It's separated by a DCR property, by the MBTA right-of-way. It's a kind of unique condition, and they've indicated a willingness to consider that as a standalone district. Next slide, please. And then we have two parcels or sort of small districts on Randolph Ave. 7-Eleven Randolph Ave is a site on which I believe there are already plans to develop. I think it's in the neighborhood of 90 units. There was a 40B process that I think has been sort of concluded, and I believe that they have their entitled now. So the logic was to sort of use that pre-existing entitlement to overlay. It seemed like a natural to overlay a multifamily district. And then on the other side of the street, if you go to the next slide, there are four parcels on the other side of Randolph Ave as well. And I believe one of them already has a 40B proposal in the works. Three of these parcels are under common ownership. I believe they're separated by a public right-of-way. And this district is compliant in terms of its accessibility and its size. It abuts, I should say, a lot of town-owned land in the back. Next slide, please. So I will talk through how these various districts were combined to form a compliant zoning version, or let's call it a draft, of one scenario that would meet the MBTA rapid transit community requirements. Again, these are the targets that we're trying to hit in terms of the metrics. If you go to the next slide. A little highlight of, again, I've touched upon a few of these things, but a little highlight of some of the ways in which this particular proposal is different from the 2023 warrant article. As I mentioned, Granite Avenue South has been removed. East Milton Square has been removed as well. There have been some sort of boundary changes around the Matapan Station. There was a little bit of a swap between Milton Station East and West. That was a sort of a subtle refinement. But the physical sort of boundary of the Elliott Street corridor remains mostly in place. Next slide, please. This was the townwide map that was proposed in 2023. You can see there's that sort of core area of East Milton, I'm sorry, of Elliott Street and Matapan, and then the sort of the East Milton districts here as well, Granite Avenue North, South, and East Milton Square. The next slide shows the current proposal. It retains, by and large, this sort of central piece that we had in the last time. But again, as I mentioned, has added a couple of new parcels. The Paper Mill 3A district site here on Truman Parkway. Those two areas along Randolph Ave. And then, as you can see, Granite Avenue North is still here, but obviously a big reduction in terms of the presence of 3A in East Milton, based on the removal of those other sites. So in general, the districts have maintained a strong presence along the LA Street corridor, but the center of gravity has moved a little bit west and a little bit south. Next slide, please. These are the districts that play a role in the proximity to the Red Line. So we're calling them the sort of the Red Line Corridor districts. The Red Line runs along this edge of town, the northern edge of town. These are the areas that meet that requirement for being within a half a mile of the stations. There's something I just want to point out. If you notice that Milton Station West and East have a kind of hatch on them. That's signifying that we are proposing that those conform to the mandatory mixed use. So those are districts in which multifamily housing would be allowed on upper floors, but there would be a requirement that the ground floor be reserved for non-residential uses. Next slide. Okay. This is the sort of the compliance table. And some of you may have seen us developing this before, but it's really a summary of all the districts on the left. And I believe we have more districts than any other 3A community I've worked on. That's for sure. In fact, you've broken the computer model. We've had to like use several different models at once.
That's right.
It's broken into what we call the key model inputs. So you enter the various zoning constraints that may or may not be applicable to that district. So in some cases, it's a maximum units per acre. For some, it's a floor area ratio. That's a kind of measure of the density of built area. There is a maximum unit per lot, which is different from units per acre. There is a minimum lot size. In other words, the minimum size that a parcel would be eligible for this. We have maximum parking spaces per unit, maximum building height, and then a minimum amount of open space. And so we've used most of these parameters in most of the districts, but some of them don't apply for various different reasons. What you're seeing on the right-hand side are the kind of outputs. So the model gives us a kind of estimate of the total number of units in each district. It calculates the acreage, the total acreage of that district. And then there's something called the density denominator. So that is the acreage, once you have subtracted undevelopable land, meaning wetlands, floodplains, things like that. And that's the number you use to get your density. So when there are wetlands around, you get a little bit of a density bonus, if you will. That results in what's called the model density. And then all of these numbers feed into the basic sort of compliance metrics. So we have, in this particular scenario, out of a required 2,461 units, we're reaching one unit above that. In terms of the model density, we're required to get to 15, and this particular scenario is at 15.71. I want to point out another thing, which is that these areas in pink are districts that are new since the 2023 warrant. And then wherever there's this other tone, it's yellow on my screen, but it looks a little greenish up here. That indicates where some of those parameters have been changed or refined since the last version. I want to point out a few things here, namely that there's been a lot of attention to really refining the Elliott Street into a number of different tiers. So there's a 6,000-square-foot minimum tier, right? That allows three units and has a maximum FAR of five. There's a 10,000-square-foot tier that gets you to four units, but your FAR is now lowered, and the logic sort of continues. The other, I think, and again, those are really refinements over the last scenario that we've looked at. Why don't I go to the next slide, which shows where we were in 2023. There was slightly more units. There was slightly lower density. We had fewer units in the Elliott Street corridor. You'll notice that Granite Avenue South, which was producing a lot of units, has been removed, as well as East Milton Square. So close to...
950, 930.
950 or so units have been removed from East Milton generally. And then, as I mentioned before, we've added, to sort of replace those, some of the parameters for Elliott Street have been sort of tweaked a little bit. And we've added those three or four other extra districts as a way to sort of make that up. Why don't I keep going? Because we have two other scenarios we need to get through, and then we can cycle back. I'm sure there's some questions. And this is a little bit of a summary of some of those changes from the 2023. Again, sort of reducing 930 units in East Milton and then adding more units to both Elliott Street and Blue Hills Parkway corridors. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the adjacent community plan. This is a plan that, again, hypothetical because the state has not designated Milton as an adjacent community. But if it were to designate Milton that way, the density requirements are the same. The minimum acreage is the same. The real difference is that there isn't a station proximity requirement, and the number of units is much lower at 985. If you go to the next slide. So the rapid transit community, this is one pathway. And if you go to the next slide, it's a kind of a flow chart that explains some of the logic, right? If you're not near a rapid transit station, do you have your own commuter rail station? No. And we end up down here. If we sort of follow this logic in the regulations, we end up here as an adjacent community with the associated numbers that we've discussed. Next slide, please. So to get to those lower numbers, we did several things. We removed the Milton Station districts. We removed Granite Avenue South. We removed East Milton Square. And if you go to the next slide. We also put the Elliott Street corridor on a diet, if you will. So all these black parcels are ones that have been removed for this scenario. And the Elliott Street corridor has been reduced to essentially just those parcels that abut Elliott Street. But that gives us the right amount of contiguity. It connects us to the Blue Hills Parkway and Matapan Station districts. Next slide. So these are where the numbers leave us. We're getting to exactly 15 units an acre. We're getting just slightly above, 16 units above, the sort of minimum compliance target. We have, I believe, come closer to some of the more original parameters in the Elliott Street corridor. For instance, a limit of three units per lot in each one of those. And some adjustments as well to Randolph Ave. Oh, we've also included Randolph Ave and the Paper Mill site as well in this scenario as a way to balance things out. Okay, the statute plan. As I mentioned, the law consists of the statute, which is the tight legal language that then refers you to the regulations. The planning board wanted to know if we just listened to the language of the statute and disregarded the regulations, what would a district look like and what would the capacity be? The statute gives us a little bit of guidance, but not a ton. We know that we need a district that allows multifamily housing. We know that we need a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre and that the district be located not more than a half a mile from a commuter rail station, a subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station. So there's a little bit of interpretation that's required, particularly what reasonable size means. So we did our best to sort of break this down and see what that would look like. If you go to the next slide. So you'll see in this chart that it doesn't tell us how many units we need. It doesn't give us any targets in terms of that. The language implies that the entire district needs to be within a half a mile of the station area. And there doesn't seem to be any requirements about contiguity. Next slide, please. So these are all the areas that are within a half a mile of a commuter rail station. There's the Blue Hill Ave area. There are these sort of slivers around the Fairmont, and then a little tiny chunk down by Reedville. The total of these areas, if you just added them up, what you're seeing here in purple is about 74 acres total. The actual amount of developable land that is just privately owned parcels is really about half of that, at about 37 and a half acres. The majority of these sites are single-family. There are some two-families. And then there's a few other, what we call other, residential condos or multifamily. Next slide, please. So if we look at these areas in more detail, this is Blue Hills, Fairmont, and Reedville. We've rotated them a little bit, just so you don't get disoriented. Included a north arrow here. Again, we don't know what reasonable means in terms of the size, but we thought it was reasonable to at least try to develop a district that felt coherent, made sense, and didn't have certain fragments that may or may not partially be in the city of Boston and not have access. And so if you go to the next slide, we sort of settled on a slightly cleaner version of what that half-mile radius looks like. You'll see in each of these drawings that the radius goes like that. In general, we've included any parcel that kind of touches that. And what we come out with, if we simply, if we tally all of these areas and divide by 15 units of an acre, that's inclusive of roadways and other things. So this is gross density. The numbers that we get to are around 780 units. And based on the differences of these sites... And based on the differences of these sites, obviously, one is more actually adjacent to shopping and transit, the others really are sort of orphaned by geographical conditions and rivers and things like that. We made some adjustments to what we thought might be, you know, the best-case scenario in terms of density, putting a little bit more density in Blue Hill Ave, a little bit less in Fairmont and Reedville, but a collection of densities and sizes that got us to an average that was just slightly above 15 units an acre. Now, one other thing to understand about the statute plan is that when you're using the regulations, the previous tables, the numbers that the model puts out are only instances where the zoning has allowed multifamily housing to be possible. In other words, it will exclude parcels that are too small to meet the requirements, and count only parcels where that multifamily, you know, three units or more, has been achieved. Without the regulations, we don't really have those kinds of restrictions. And so in this case, this is just 15 units, 15.02 units per acre across. Whether or not a tiny parcel could only get to one unit, or four, or whatever it was, we accounted all of the units that were possible in that district. And again, this requires some interpretation. I'm sure there's probably several other kinds of legal ways of breaking this down, but we did our best to sort of understand what that might look like generally. Next slide, you may be ready for Q and A.
Great, thank you very much. So any questions from the board before, and we will open it up, for folks to speak? Any questions at this time?
I'm good.
Okay, great. All right, so, let me just pull this up, just here. So, at this time, we will transition into the Q and A portion of the forum. To keep things moving, each speaker, we will allow three minutes. Julia will be managing the timer in the room, raising her hand at the two-and-a-half-minute mark to indicate your time is almost up, and again, at the three minutes to indicate your time has ended. For those who are joining us on Zoom, Cheyenne will raise the virtual hand at those same times to signal you. We did have two people who asked to speak a little bit longer. One had a presentation, so he is now going to come to our meeting on the 24th to allow for more time for that presentation. But there was one other person who asked if he runs over a minute, and I had given him permission before we had set this. So with that, if you want to, do you have the list of the names? Or is that out?
Those are the names, yeah.
Would you mind grabbing those, and then we can just read off, so we can keep everybody in order?
Sign in.
There is a sign-in sheet.
Oh, okay.
So if you didn't get a chance to sign in, please feel free to add your name. Yeah, so we can follow that, great.
They use that as a sign-in sheet rather than a speaker sheet?
Oh, I'm sorry, a speaker sheet, yes.
Well, you're gonna have 80 speakers.
All right, we'll read through the list.
Everybody signed in.
Oh, everybody signed, it was, okay.
I think you're gonna have to ask them to raise their hands.
You know what, we'll ask for hands raised, as people like to speak, I think that's fair. Thank you. Yeah, and you can move to the front before you are ready to speak, but, yes, would you like to...
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Could you explain the rapid transit versus the adjacent versus the hypothetical? What's the process? What are our odds of being...
Sir, can you come to the mic, so folks that aren't here can hear you?
Yeah, thank you, that's...
Jeff Patterson, 1033 Gresham Road. And could you explain a little bit about the rapid transit, the adjacent, the hypothetical? What happened? Are they going to decide that for us? Are we going to, like, our neighborhood is excluded.
Right.
If you could just...
Are people able to hear the question? Was the microphone closed enough?
No.
Yeah, just, he's asking, okay, go ahead, if you want to just repeat it.
The difference between the rapid transit, the adjacent, and the hypothetical statute? What's the process for us being designated that? And, you know, you give three scenarios, what's the likelihood of each one happening?
So that's a great question, and probably...
I just missed that procedurally.
Exactly.
By the way, thank you very much for a very clear and concise description.
Right. So the final regulations just came out since our last meeting, so I haven't really, we haven't really been able to discuss it. But we have, they've maintained Milton as classified as a rapid transit community. We have been in talks with HLC, as a significant number of the residents feel that we do not have a, that we don't have a subway in Milton, we have, we are within a half-mile of a commuter rail station. So we have been sort of advocating for the town on behalf. The other big issue which makes the challenge, and why we've been advocating to be in a different classification, is that only half of the land area along the trolley station, if you were going to consider that a trolley, is on the Boston side, which, as you know, we cannot zone, Boston's exempt. So we only have half the land area, but we're being asked to do the full 25%. And there's just a recognition that, and even some, you know, we've heard of the Speaker of the House saying this week, Milton doesn't have a train, we have a little crazy trolley. So it's a stretch to call it a subway. And the towns that have a commuter station, commuter line, have a 10% requirement, and they have a significantly greater capacity than what we have. So we do feel that there's a basis for challenging this, we're hoping to work still with HLC, and we want to be compliant by July, so that's our goal, so...
So the answer is to get them to decide before July?
So it's, yes, we're trying to work with HLC to iron that out, and to have a fair...
Okay, any chance we'll be pick a hypothetical statute, or no? Is that kind of a little...
That's sort of a basis for what the law says, just recognizing what is the law, and what is the difference between what the regulations are? And there's question, are the regulations actually expanding upon what the statute actually says? So...
Okay, is there any likelihood we might fall into that category?
I...
Or we don't know yet?
We don't know, yeah, but...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good question, but, yeah. Yeah, Aaron, could...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Aaron Bradley, 28 Lincoln Street, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4.
And I just want to say one thing before you start. I'm just gonna remind everybody, because I can tell...
Select Board Member.
Select Board Member, yes. And everyone in the community here, that this is a very, you know, people feel very strongly and very emotional about this, on both sides, as you know, with the referendum. So I'm just gonna ask that all comments are respectful...
Absolutely.
And the tone is respectful by everyone who speaks on either side of this issue, so...
Of course, and that's what we should have at every meeting, I hope we can.
Thank you, I just wanted to...
So Aaron Bradley, 28 Lincoln Street, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4, Select Board Member. I have a couple of questions. One, I heard you say that we are negotiating with HLC, I'd like to know who's negotiating with HLC?
I didn't, we're in talks with HLC.
Who?
So we have had, our department staff has reached out, we...
So that one meeting that they had like a month ago, or like six weeks ago? Or is there more talks that are happening?
There was talk at that time of a follow-up meeting.
Okay, but there hasn't.
But there has, we don't have a follow, you would know if there's a follow-up meeting.
That's what I was, that's why I was like, what is happening?
Not at this time, we don't have, we have not, we don't have a date for that meeting.
Okay, and so the regulations that just came out, that again, says that we're rapid transit, I think I heard you say that we are trying to change that? And so I wonder who's trying to change that, because the only person, or the only body that can do that is the Select Board.
Correct.
So I'm curious as to why that's being said here.
It would have to be decided by the Select Board.
Okay.
So that's without question.
Okay, so this is a Select Board matter about how we are designated as rapid transit?
Correct.
Okay. And right now, there's been no movement on the Select Board to change us from rapid transit?
I think my understanding, in speaking with the Town Administrator, is that the Select Board was waiting for the final regulations.
Yes.
And no one knew what that was, what the decision was going to be.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So my final question is, and I'm sure you read this in the paper today, is I have a big concern about how much money we've lost, because we have not signed a piece of paper, Madam Chair. And so I have concern on both this Board and on the Select Board. We've now lost over $1 million, we're at like 1.17, of grant funding that we've lost, because we wouldn't sign a piece of paper. And so I'd like to know why this Board, why we should, why that's okay. You know, we're looking at a $9.5 million override, I have been advocating nonstop to be compliant with the law, which right now would only require us to sign a piece of paper. So I guess I personally would like to know why the Planning Board feels that we don't have to do that, and we don't have to follow that law.
Well, I don't want to speak, I can't speak for the rest of the Planning Board, we haven't had a chance to discuss the final regulations coming out.
No, 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 this is before the final regs.
So I will say that the Planning Board has been advocating to do the best thing for the entire town, and that is why we have not jumped into the 2023 plan, and we've been waiting to work with the state on what we think would be a fair treatment of the town.
And who's working with the state, again? I mean, you said staff, but they haven't met recently, and there hasn't been any discussion, and the final regs are out. So I guess what I'm wondering is, we are not in compliance, because we won't sign a piece of paper, we are now sitting here, and thank you to UTEAL for all the work that they've done, it's been fabulous. We're now sitting here, and we're looking at multiple different scenarios, two of which do not fall in compliance.
I think we're at the three-minute point.
That's fine.
Sorry.
I'll stop, but I'm just gonna, let me wrap this up. So we are not in compliance.
We welcome any written comments from the community who's not here tonight also to speak, I wanted to say that.
Absolutely, absolutely, but we're not in compliance. And so I guess my question to you and to all the members here, why would it be that we're even looking at something that's not within what the final regulations say? So that's my piece, and...
Well, the question was that the regulations weren't finalized, they weren't properly promulgated, as you know.
And now they are.
But that was just, and we have not...
It was just last week, I know.
It was last week, so this has been a moving target, regulations have been changing, they were guidelines, now they're regulations, so it's been a moving target, I'll just say that.
But now that they've been, are you gonna comply with it?
We need to discuss it as a board, so...
Amazing, thank you, I appreciate that, and I look forward to hearing more about it.
Great, thank you. Yes. Welcome.
Good evening, Steve Acera, 49 Meadowview Road.
Great, thank you.
First, I'm a little confused on the format. Is this supposed to be questions and answers of the guest speaker, or is this supposed to be questions and answer of the Planning Board, and policy statements and endorsements to the Planning Board?
Yeah, this is really, we want questions about the plans, you know, for people to be able to ask that. If there's a question that UTEAL can't answer, we will do our best to fill in, but...
Okay. My question for the guest speaker, in your introductory comments, you referred to the two-bailled Manipan Trolley Line as an extension of the Red Line. I'm wondering if you're familiar with the fact that the MBTA Board of Directors in 1968, in their fourth annual report to the governor, the legislature, and the public, specifically abandoned the extension of the Red Line from Ashmore to Manipan?
I'm not aware of that. I use the term not in a technical sense, but it's just how I think of it as an extension of the Red Line that's different than the Major Park of the Red Line.
Well, that's actually a term of art in terms of subways.
Okay.
And actually, two actual extensions of the Red Line that the MBTA constructed was the extension from JFK UMass to Braintree, and the extension from Harvard to Airway. So the MBTA Board of Directors specifically rejected and abandoned the extension of the subway system from Ashmore to Manipan in 1968. I'd also like to mention to the speaker that the Boston Globe, on Sunday, February 11th, 2024, published a column in which it said, "The trolley has knocked the subway," and everyone knows that. Milton should have received a different designation. And on April 11th, Speaker of the House Mariano says Milton has a legitimate complaint over the MBTA Housing Board. He said, "If I felt that if I was the judge, and I'm not, all this, all Milton has is this crazy little trolley car. They don't have a train, they don't have a bus station. So I said, if I look at it, they don't have enough to really be a full-fledged MBTA community." So I would request that UTEAL and the Planning Board comply with the law, which is the statute plan that's being considered by the Planning Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just, through you, I would like to clarify that UTEAL is a consultant working on our behalf. We're not asking them to interpret the law or to provide legal guidance, we're asking them best ways to zone by, with the best information that we have. And so let's leave our comments and questions for our consultant, to the work that they've done, and the proposal, and legal questions, I think, as has been said, belong at the Select Board. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes.
Thank you. My name is Tom Callahan, 16 Orono Street, Precinct 4. Thank you for your, for this forum, and thank you for your work on this to date, and thank you to UTEAL for their work as well. I have a quick comment, and then a question that probably is for both the Board and UTEAL. Not probably a surprise to those of you who know me, I am in support of putting before a 25% compliant plan in front of Town Meeting. I think the state has spoken several times, as most recently Monday, they have made that very, very clear, that we are, we were, we continue to be, we will always be a rapid transit community. Some of us professionally have lots of connections to HLC. I see no interest in bending the rules for one town with seven miles from the regional economic hub of downtown Boston. So, that's my opinion. The question I have is more a procedural one around Town Meeting. You've presented three plans, two non-compliant, one compliant here today. What is the plan for Town Meeting? Is the plan for you to recommend one plan, all three plans to go before Town Meeting, and let Town Meeting decide? Obviously, it's ultimately a Town Meeting decision at this point, and I guess it's a question for the Board, and it's a question to UTEAL, in your experience advising other towns, what has, what have other towns done in terms of that? Have towns actually put before a non-compliant plan in front of Town Meeting as the only option, or as one of multiple options?
I can speak quickly to what we've done in other communities. We've never worked with a community that submitted a non-compliant plan. There is generally, in almost all the communities that we've worked in, the final submission, the final plan is one plan, it's yes or no. The proposed amendments have to be controlled in a way so that they don't compromise its Lincoln was a special case, where they were out of the gate very early, and so they had a Town Meeting before the final Town Meeting to decide which of three schemes that they would proceed with.
All compliant.
All compliant. And then, and then there was a fourth one that was added as a kind of an amended, amended option, but that, that takes a lot more time.
And the Board?
Okay. You know what, that time's up, but I would be happy to...
I spoke for a lot less than three minutes.
Was that, Julia's keeping the time.
We're just trying to get...
I'm just, I know, I'm just keeping the time.
I didn't know the answers were part of the three-minute.
Yeah, that's all that, we, I'll just say, we have not discussed it as a Board, because the regulations just came out, so we have not had a chance to talk, but, consult, so...
Can I speak for a minute? To Mr. Callahan, at this point, it's not possible for us to determine as a Board whether we would submit to Town, to Town Meeting, one plan, two plans, or three plans for approval. You know, our responsibility is to explore all of the options, and hopefully come to, it would be better if we could come to Town Meeting with one plan, that would probably be best. We're not sure if we can do that. I do want to address, because I want to address rapid transit for a moment if I could. Because the speakers that have come to the table so far have referenced rapid transit, which leads us to the 25% zoning requirement. When the state sued Milton, Milton responded to defend itself. Within Milton's defense was an argument that Milton was not a rapid transit community. The SJC ruling never answered, never answered that argument. They left it alone. So what they did say to Milton is if Milton wanted to adjudicate the 25%, the rapid transit classification, Milton has the opportunity to do so. So that opportunity remains for Milton to adjudicate whether or not we are a rapid transit community. Because that is up in the air and Milton has the opportunity to adjudicate that if it wants, we have a responsibility as a Planning Board to explore all options. So it's for that reason that we're not focused only on the 25%. We would be irresponsible as a Board to ignore the fact that that's not been adjudicated and ignore the other alternatives, which are the three that we have currently presented tonight through UTIL. And I hope that makes sense, not only for the audience here tonight, but for everybody in the community. Until that is definitively, and the only way it's going to be definitively decided is if Milton either decides to accept that, yes, okay, we'll accept that we're a rapid transit community, or no, we don't accept that we're a rapid transit community and we want that adjudicated and we are going to go back through the courts to adjudicate that. Until that happens, one or the other, we would be mistaken as a Board to ignore the other alternatives.
Meredith, can I make a comment?
Come to the mic, please.
Can I just make a comment first?
Let this finish, please.
Well, that's new information.
I don't think anything's new there. That's all, that's all public record.
I think what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is doubling down on the legal strategy to sue the state.
That's not my decision. That's not, I am not saying that we are. It's not, that's not a decision that this Board makes, but the town has the opportunity to adjudicate if they want to.
We have an opportunity to adjudicate lots of things, but we don't take advantage of that. And you seem to be endorsing a legal.
I'm not endorsing anything. I'm providing information that hopefully brings some clarity for everybody that's here.
Okay.
So can I just add to a little bit more context? Milton did not submit an action plan by the deadline of February 13th or 14th, I think. So currently, we are deemed out of compliance and ineligible for quite a number of grant programs. I think there was some reference to that by Ms. Bradley earlier. And there continue to be new ones that were ineligible for, ones as recently as a week ago that we just found out about. And we will, if we do not submit zoning that is compliant with the regulations by July 13th or 14th, we will remain out of compliance and we will continue to be ineligible for grant programs, but we could also be subject to enforcement action by the Attorney General, like we were a year ago. So those are, that's the context at which we're talking about whether there's legal action, there are consequences to this decision. And we have talked as a Board about having a zoning that is compliant and that if, for some reason, another path were found, how might that look? I think it's important for the community to understand what these could look like, what we are, though, realistically, in the way the state views us realistically, and what the sacrifices that we're asking residents to make in terms of being out of compliance.
And Cheryl, if I could, and the schedule that is in the packet walks us right to that deadline of July. So it is our intention to use the time that we have up until that period of time in July.
Our goal is to be compliant, if we can, yes. Sorry, you were next, and then. And we have CP on Zoom, probably.
Yeah.
John Driscoll, 718 Randolph Ave. Sir, could you put up the access road drawn, please?
You might, Cheyenne, you might go to the aerial view of earlier in the slideshow.
It's the 2025, yeah, not.
So, all right, you don't have my house in there, thank you. But I do live in that area. I live on Randolph Ave. And this is a big snowball, it's coming my way. I'm not, you know, these people all want this and that's not too good for one neighborhood, all right? They're adding 37 units to a project that already had 90. And it's a very dangerous site, they're entering out and go out. And the access road, I fought to get the light for that 40B. So that's coming back to haunt me. I invested a lot of money to get that light and now it's going to come out good for the town. But I'm going to tell everybody here, when you get a foot of snow, you're going to end up with 15 to 16 inches on those sidewalks. The town does nothing for that neighborhood, absolutely nothing for that neighborhood. So all these people you're going to put in that neighborhood, they're all saying they're going to get the bus. Where are they going to stand? There's no way to stand. The town does nothing for that street. So I live on that street. When you get 12 inches of snow, there's at least 15 to 16 inches on the sidewalk. So everybody better start thinking about who's going to maintain that stuff for all these people you want to move in. Because the town does nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think, who was next? Yep, you can come up and then.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Doug Hine, 453 Elliott, right in the middle of Elliott Street corridor. Just got a couple of questions for you guys. So Tom had mentioned that you don't know exactly how many plans you're going to submit to town meeting. I get that. Like, what's the metric of how you're going to decide how many plans to submit? A slightly different question, man, just trying to feel, what are you guys weighing in terms of? How are you going to make the decision? Because, and I guess this is another question, you have to have a decision made by, is it May for the June town meeting? Because that's only a month. So that's kind of my question, is it, what's the metric that you guys? Is it feedback from the public? Is it Town Council weighing in? What is it?
It's the Select Board's decision. I think really what ultimately will get submitted in discussions. Obviously, we haven't had a chance to talk, the regulations just came out. But there will be a conversation with the Select Board and the Select Board will make that decision.
Okay.
And feedback from the community, obviously, is very important.
Okay, so you guys are going to come up with the plans, make your recommendation, and then it's the Select Board's call?
We'll have multiple scenarios.
Whether or not to submit an article. Okay.
I think something definitely will be submitted, but.
I thought the Planning Board had to submit the article.
Well, we will, we come up with the articles and we will have something to submit based on the decision of the direction of the Select Board.
So you guys are going to submit, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, I'm sorry if I sound like I'm trying to do that. So one of the metrics will be the feedback from the Select Board. I'm just trying to figure out like how.
Well, we have not had a chance to discuss, so we can't do it tonight. We're, this isn't the opportunity, but we will be discussing it as the Board, what we would like to put forth to the Select Board. And we'll have to consult with Town Council as well.
Okay, so let me ask you a slightly different, what are the uncertainties? What do you have to resolve in your mind before you're able to make a firm decision what plan or plans to recommend to town meeting? What are the unknowns?
Can I speak for a minute? To be honest with you, sir, it would really be good to hear some feedback on what's up here on the screen. We have UTIL here.
Awesome.
Matthew, I mean, if there are residents here that see the neighborhoods up there or on the edge of a neighborhood and they have some questions, you know, we're here tonight to hear feedback in this public forum, on the presentation. We can sit here and go back and forth with every single person in the room tonight on the type of questions you're asking. We don't have an answer for it. But Matthew is here. He's committed so many hours and so many days for a long period of time. We'd like to utilize his expertise to really ask questions about what we presented.
By three minutes they're running, so I'll make my opinions real quick. Number one, I'm in the middle of Elliott Street. I think the whole thing sucks, but I'm committed to like having compliant plans because I don't want to lose more money. If you guys want to challenge it in court, fantastic. Better yet, get somebody to change the law. That would be a great way, or get, better yet, get someone to clarify what the law is. That's what the legislature should do. I'd love to see that happen. I don't think it's going to happen, I'd love to see that happen. In terms of the three plans that we have, the only one that I could support would be the 25% plan because it is compliant. If you want to then go ahead and challenge the designation of the rapid transit, I'm all for it. You know, the adjacent plan and then the made-up plan, I don't even know where that came from. So I don't agree with those. So that's my feedback. Thank you for your time. And I really do appreciate your work, I do.
Thank you. When you say the whole thing sucks, do you mean the plan?
Yeah.
So no, no, is it the 25% mandate from the state or is it the work we've done or what sucks?
I think the MBTA Communities Act is terrible. I think it was passed at the very end of a COVID-shortened session. Nobody read it. And nobody knew what it was and they said, okay, you figure it out. And then these regulations came out. But this is what regulations do, they fill in the gaps. They are, they do have the force of law. And nobody voted on those. It wasn't like the product of hearings in the public that the legislature weighed in on. It was just kind of done by people that were unelected. So that's what I think sucks.
I agree.
So anyway, thanks, guys.
Okay, so, all right, we want to give opportunity for everyone to speak, so. Sorry, yeah, the neighbors, and then, yeah.
Hi, I'm Lisa Leo, 26 Walcott Road. I'm right next to Brush Hill. Okay, I'm Lisa Leo. I live at 26 Walcott Road. I'm next to Brush Hill in the corner of Walcott and Brush Hill. And I'm just getting involved in this process because it seems like through the past year or so, it hasn't impacted me. So now I just realized that my whole corner of my neighborhood is all, 10 acres of it approximately, is being added. And I'm not really sure when it was added, but when you look at, it's all like these quirky little side roads, private roads, meandering roads, horseshoe roads that connect to old homes. And of course, there's also Big Blue, and I know this several properties are Big Blue. But I'd like to know, like, when was it added? Why was it added? Because, and is there a possibility that that could be excluded at some point due to the fact that it's just a very weird, like, they're little old homes with.
We should put the plan up.
Side roads.
Matthew, can we put this?
Private side roads.
I'm sorry, can we put the slide up?
Yes, please.
So they can speak directly to it? Yeah, let's go back to what you.
And then also, the other question is, excuse me. The other question is, the hypothetical statute proposal seems, there's a lot of legal questions around it, which, why would that be something that would be viable when you said there's so many questions around it? When the other plans seem, the prior two plans or one plan seems pretty concrete, that there are like a lot of legal questions around it?
Can I answer that question? Can I answer that, Matthew, if you don't mind? The questions that Matthew referred to are the questions in terms of the calculations of. The compliance model allows for the calculations in the other districts much more easily. It functions that way. But the one thing that's definitive is that these areas are a half-mile from commuter rail stations. That is.
As the crow flies.
Well, they're all as the crow flies, but, you know, that is.
They're not like walking.
I understand, I understand. But they are definitively within a half-mile. So why are we examining? Why are we looking at it? Because we know it is within a half-mile of a commuter rail station. But if we could look at your particular area.
Readville.
Right, which is, which is what's up. So you see Brush Hill Road here at the bottom right-hand corner. And you can see what UTIL had recommended, which was to remove those two parcels that are circled. Right.
But it doesn't mean that we're going to support this plan because I know where you live and it's special. It's all, and this is the challenge that we're having with our 25% plan is, it's.
Their apartment.
Everyone's special, I mean, all of it.
Exactly, we all feel that way and I understand that. And there's these, you know, all of a sudden.
It makes it difficult and we're trying to put multifamily housing where multifamily, it's characteristic of the neighborhood, so.
Right, and are those units, what is the height rate range of those? Are they three?
We haven't even gotten that far yet.
That's something in the future that one will be fighting.
The phrase, if you don't mind me just bringing some clarity to it, to say that it's added, I think a more appropriate expression would be that it's under consideration. Because that's truly all it is, it's under consideration. Everything is under consideration. We're, you know, obviously, you moved from one, you said earlier, you know, it may not have been, it may not have had too much of your attention because it wasn't in your neighborhood. You know, when it was on Granite Ave, you might not have been paying too much attention to it.
Well, we've had our fights over there.
Understood, so as we've explored alternatives, you know, I think the best way to look at it is that they are under consideration.
But to say we've had a little breathing room, but we just had a 40B project just a block from me. So, you know, we're not saying nothing, we want nothing there. We're not like, we have Curry College behind us and they're wonderful neighbors and we've worked with them. So it went, yes, of course, when it gets added to your, and you have to face it, yeah, I mean, I'm not going to be talking about Granite Ave because I don't live in that, we all know that.
Right, right.
The way it works.
I understand.
So can I add something? Just quickly, again, for others who might to understand the law or the statute versus the regulations. The regulations provide opportunities for towns to tailor zoning specific to their communities. Whereas the law just says 15 units an acre, half-mile from the station, that's it. And you can see the kind of problem that that, when you take that strict couple of parameters and that's all you have. Whereas the regulations give us a lot more opportunity to tailor it. And that's why when Matthew said there's more districts in that rapid transit plan than any others, because we've taken advantage of that opportunity to fine-tune it and to tailor it to what's on the ground, what's there. So where there's already larger multifamily buildings, that's where we're addressing a little bit more density and we're doing lower density, where we have already existing lower density in our single and two-family along the Elliott Street and Blue Hill Parkway corridors. And, but the law itself doesn't provide that. Those are in the guidelines. So I think the guidelines provide opportunities for us to craft something and I hope that people looked at how that was done in the rapid transit because that is the only one that's compliant with what we know in the regulations and what HLC's current position is. And this is something that has not been broached with HLC at all. And I find it a really, not the best way to proceed for the reasons that you can't tailor it. You can't consider some of these other conditions. You can't consider some of these other conditions. It's just not part of what's, what's in the statute.
Understood. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah. Okay, we had a couple, we had Pete Jackson and, oh, sorry. And then Rob, you had your hand up. Pete.
Good evening, Peter Jackson, 14 Capen Street. Before my time starts, can I just ask a question about something that was part of the plan but not presented? And that's the three tiers. There's, I didn't see a plan that showed what these tiers are or a description of what created tier one, tier two, tier three in Elliott Street. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah. Cheyenne, can you go to the, the table?
You don't have a map that shows where they are?
No, because the tiers are based on the lot size. So it's not a geographical, you're talking about the Elliott Street corridor tiers.
Okay. So a tier is strictly based on how big the lot is?
Yep. So tier one is any parcel that's between 6,000 and 10,000 square feet. Tier two is between 10 and 15, and then tier three is above 15.
Can I just mention that we had those tiers in the 2023? And what varied in there was the FAR, so that there was a lesser FAR for the larger the lot size. That's why it was made into tiers.
And open space requirements.
But there still is, but the same 40, oh, you're, yeah, same 40% in the Elliott Street corridor.
Okay, you can start my time. I am in favor of presenting a 25% compliant plan. I was a strong supporter of the original plan, but I'm aghast at what I see here tonight. It's just, I think that, I think what it's doing, it's an unfair concentration of all of the required units on Elliott Street. It's not even within the quarter mile, it's in within a thousand feet. So you've crammed it all into a very narrow corridor, which is going to create a very high density, conceivably a high density neighborhood in one part of town. The statute or HLC is allowing us to put 50% within the quarter mile and 50% without it. And I think as a matter of equity, that should be a target, to put 50% of it within the quarter mile and 50% out town, outside that in order to be more equitable to all the neighborhoods. I, at the first time around, I advocated for a larger square foot lot size. I really don't think these proposed 5,000 and 6,000 square foot lot size are suitable for three units of housing and three off-street parking spaces, including a 40% open space. I think you're creating a character that just isn't Milton character. It doesn't leave any outside space for kids to play or to have a patio or anything else. It just crams it in, I think, much too strongly. The last time around, when it went to the, to vote, the precinct two were very strong supporters and probably the highest percentage of people who voted for the plan that was presented, and that, those are the people who live on the Elliott Street corridor because the plan was very carefully crafted, not to, not overburdened. And we were, as a neighborhood, were strong supporters of multifamily housing as a general rule. But the, the plan was carefully crafted. This putting all the units along Elliott Street, I just do not think you're going to get the neighborhood to support it. I think it's, it's an irresponsible approach to any kind of equity in the distribution of units. And just the last thing, everybody knows Elliott Street is already overburdened with traffic as it is. And to take this number of units and add them to the neighborhood would require a major reconstruction of Elliott Street, including land takings. So it just isn't feasible and it's not fair to put that higher concentration along the Elliott Street corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think Rob was next. Oh, and-
First of all, thank you, Uteel. Thank you, the planning board. I think this is a very complicated matter. I have probably detailed questions for you guys, specifically the paper mill site.
Rob, sorry, can you just put your name and address?
Specifically the paper mill site.
Sorry, Rob, your name and address.
Oh, sorry. Rob Leavash, I'm, I live at 585 Brushhill Road, a town meeting member in precinct town. I'm curious about the paper mill site specifically, and there's parking spaces per unit listed on all these, on all these pieces. The paper mill site, is that even accessible by car? Is that, is that even a developable site?
You, one would have to make a deal with the MBTA. There is a underpass right now. It's probably insufficiently sized and would need to be widened. And there is, I think, a designated area where vehicles are intended, when they have to, can cross on the surface. But yeah, it's a very difficult site and you, you know, all of it would need to be coordinated with the MBTA.
But one of the reasons why we put so many units there is to try to make it economically feasible to develop it.
Yeah, understood. I was just curious, I was just curious about the site.
You've identified an important detail, which is that we, we're not showing any kind of maximum or minimum parking spaces on this site. The intention was, because it seemed like there was a desire, it's a brownfield site, it's maybe a desire to actually develop it in a way that cleans it up. It's going to require some flexibility.
Yeah.
We did run the model with one space per unit. It still works. If we wanted to say one space per unit minimum, that it'll still, in theory, produce the same number of units. But that is there for, with the intention of providing some flexibility for development.
Thank you. And my, my second question is just regarding mixed use. And so there's, it looks like there's two zones on here that are mixed use, and maybe the planning board could speak to this. I know you're doing some work with the East Milton overlay district. And so I'm just curious, is there any of that work in the East Milton overlay district? Why wasn't that considered in, in the overall, in this overall MBTA community plan? That's all. I don't know if someone could answer that.
That is, well, I'll, I can answer that. Basically, we are, we are ready to come to town meeting with an overlay zoning for East Milton Square. We've worked really hard with, it has some really great features to it, preservation of historic structures, a height limit, et cetera. So the number of units that we would have to zone in East Milton would be at such a capacity that, that people would not take, they would not use the overlay zoning.
It wouldn't fit into this.
It would have been, and the density would have been-
It would be too low for this plan?
It would have been too low for this plan, yes. The MBTA would have to, there would have to be a tremendous number of units.
I just, can I add to that? We have a maximum number that, of the units that can be in a mandatory mixed use. We've utilized those in Milton Village and in Central Ave. So we wouldn't be able to make it mandatory mixed use in East Milton Square. And we didn't want to lose business use on the ground floor. So if you put this in East Milton Square and you can't have it mandatory mixed use, you could have properties which shift from business to fully multifamily with the loss of business opportunity. And we felt as if that that was a significant loss.
So with these mixed units?
Potential loss.
So with these mixed, with these two, two zones, mixed, mixed use, is that, that's at the maximum right now?
That's my understanding, was where, those were at the maximum.
Yeah. You're limited to 25%.
Okay.
Yeah.
We wanted to push that as, yeah, that's-
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's close. It's close.
And Meredith, may I just, I just want to give a little bit of information to Pete Jackson, who spoke on the changes on the Elliott Street corridor in those tiers. The, while the minimum lot size was lowered from 7,500 to 6,000, the open space requirement was kept at 40% and the FAR was reduced. So the total amount that would be allowed to be built in terms of the building is also smaller. So it's scaled down. And in these, it's not in this presentation, but in prior presentations, Uteel has showed us that what can fit is what mix, is what's in the, the size of a unit is what the compliance model uses as 1,000 square feet per unit. And so this would be three 1,000 square foot units max that would fit within that FAR for these smaller lot sizes. So it's still controlling the size of the building, still allowing for the open space, even though it's allowing it on a, on a smaller lot. And the way that that, what happens with that is a lot, it means that our, our density has increased because we have more lots that are, you know, can be applied to the district and less that are ineligible. But it's not changing the, the boundary of the district whatsoever. I just wanted to point that out. It's a little bit in the weeds, but I think Pete, you understand things in the weeds.
We have two people ahead and then I did Catherine. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, Anthony, have you? Oh, sorry, and Brian.
Hi, my name's Anthony Larkin. I live at 1061 Brushhill Road, long time listener, first time caller, actually second time, I guess, calling. But I just want to first say like thank you to Uteel for coming here and thanks for setting up this forum. I think it's a great opportunity for us to learn. You have to invest hours in watching all the planning board meetings to get to this level of understanding and you've all compressed it into making it nice and easy to understand for, for all those folks. So thank you. And Zoe, I hope you're feeling better as well. I've watched her on Zoom many times, so, and she's doing a great job as well. I have a couple pieces of feedback specifically on the plans for Uteel and then, and then I want to talk about the Reedville Station area, which is obviously very close to home for me. One thing in particular was the dot parcel on, on Granite Ave. The slide showed that it was excluded because the, the state hasn't expressed any intent to dispose of that property for development. I don't think any of the people here that own property in the town have expressed any intent to sell their property for development. So I don't think they should be excluded. And we're also, we're talking about the zoning here, right? We're not talking about getting plans approved for developments. We're talking about zoning. Zoning should be able to apply to any parcel within the town of Milton, regardless of who owns it. It's up to them whether they decide to dispose of it and use it. And so I think we should take advantage of that. That should go back into the plan. I think would help our numbers and I think it's a great, great spot. The second is that, we talk about this as a theoretical target, right? You know, this unit target doesn't mean these things will get developed. I think people have used that phrasing to try and make the residents feel better about this. And I don't think it's appropriate because once it's zoned, it opens the door for a developer. Zoned by right is a very specific type of zoning that really opens the door wide for a developer and takes away due process from permitting and other things. And so we need to be very careful about trying to use that opinion to minimize that. Once a, a large structure goes up in a neighborhood, the next neighbor sells, the next neighbor sells, and it becomes a domino effect and it changes the entire neighborhood. So let's be clear about that language and what the implications of this is going to be for the town. The other piece is that on the statute plans specifically, I think we really need to, I, I think it's a good idea, right? I think the way the statute's written, it's very vague. That's the state's problem. They didn't do a great job clarifying what it meant. We should use that and we should go back to them with something that complies with the law as it was written. And that is one district of reasonable size with 15 units per acre as a minimum, that's just a minimum, within a half mile of transit. We could do that with just the Matapan Station area alone. We don't need to spread that across. And so Uteel made the recommendation to include all areas within a half mile of a commuter rail station. I don't think it's necessary. I think we do that all with the Matapan. There's no unit target specified in the statute and we could go back to UHLC and say, what do you think? Does this meet the requirement of the statute of the law? And if they don't think so, then a court can decide that. And then we can get more clarification. And I think that's a, a good opportunity for us to go further. And lastly, I'm going to speak about the Reedville area. I think all the other areas or some of the other areas use satellite views of the map. I think you should do a satellite view and I'm going to provide some comments and some more research that I've done next week in the planning board meeting, if anybody wants to join there, with some additional satellite view. You'll see that area is completely cut off using, with, with natural land features and the Ponton River Valley, riverbed, the Fallow Meadow basically continues and separates it from the Reedville Station area. And, and if you've been down there, if you walk the area, you can see that it's, it's a very different and it's not accessible to transit and it's not appropriate for development.
Anthony, thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate it. We just have others that, and then we'll have to-
Meredith, I, I, a couple of points that were brought up that I'd like to respond to.
Yeah.
The, in reverse, the, the question of as of right, will it happen? As, you're, you're correct, as of right has a very important meaning. That's a, it's a kind of entitlement. But site plan review is still required. And site plan review is, can be pretty thorough and it gives the town control over, you know, how does the parking work? Are you putting in a curb cut? There's, there's often design review associated with it. So I didn't want everyone to get the impression that you could just go build whatever you want to the rules, that there are layers of review and, and impact analysis. And then with respect to the, the DOT site, the regs prohibit us from including publicly owned land, period, unless there is some specific plan that they will be used for residential purposes later. So if a municipality already had a piece of land, let's say they had already issued out an RFP to developers with a clear intent of developing it, they might be able to count it towards their requirement. But in this case, because it's owned by DOT, they've pretty, you know, they put it in writing that they really have no imminent plans of disposing of it. And, you know, it's not even in the housing production plan now because that's been expired. So it's just the regs that don't allow us to use it.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Brian and then, I'm sorry. We'll, we'll get to everybody's-
Don't forget, we have people on Zoom.
And we will, I know.
Brian McGuire, 94 Craft and Ave.
Great, welcome.
Just a couple of questions on infrastructure. I mean, are there, it's going to be, we're taking single family houses, replacing them with multi-unit buildings. Are there considerations for like water and sewer? Like, do we know, do we have capacity? It's going to be another 2,500 people living in this area. Have there been cost projections on that? Does anyone know?
Not on our end. I, I can speak to this, I can't speak to the, the utility capacity in Milton. It's not my area. But I can speak to how the state views this issue, which is that, and this goes back to site plan review, that the state is, is, the law and the regs are not concerned about whether some of this development, whether there are utilities for this development. There may in fact not be, in which case site plan review can stop a project, right? If there just aren't sufficient utilities or if there isn't space for subject systems or, you know, whatever it is, there are other layers of regulation that might prevent a too large development from happening. But in terms of purely from the state's perspective about compliance, they're, they're not concerned about it.
Developers don't have to bear the cost of infrastructure and food, is correct?
No, they do.
They do.
Water? That's true.
Yes, we had clarification in 2023 from the DPW director that that is a separate layer of review, as Matthew said. But the DPW director was clear that, you know, permit could be denied if there was inadequate infrastructure and the, the developer could have an opportunity to improve the infrastructure, but it would be at their cost.
Their cost.
Their cost.
Yeah, so, but the biggest question was what happens if there are lots of developments? It could have the capacity for one or two developments, but there might not be capacity at the third and fourth development. So then that would probably fall on the town.
No, there's still no requirement for the town to have to improve the infrastructure.
So you could deny, is what you're saying? Like the third, if the third one comes up, you would deny that?
Correct. That's what we've been, that's the understanding.
I think that's a long shot.
That was not my understanding.
The town is not required to improve the infrastructure related to this zoning and, and a developer is not entitled to have the town provide the infrastructure for a development that they propose. And that's not something unique to this zoning or to, or to any of these properties. That's standard procedure. So the other thing I, I wanted to make sure, just I'll add to this because there's some question about what as of right also means. It still means that other regulatory bodies have their approval processes. So the, if there's wetlands, the Conservation Commission, if it's a historic building, the Historical Commission, and it still goes to the fire department, to the police department, to the DPW, all for review, the building department eventually. And so all of those layers of approval still exist, unlike some other methods of approvals like the chapter 40B, for example. This is purely this piece of the zoning.
But if it, you can't put on like architectural changes to them, let's say like you don't want the design of something, right?
We have guidelines. We, we have guidelines, we can have guidelines, design guidelines, and those are, could, would be reviewed during the site plan approval process.
Well, and as of right now, as you know, because you're in the warrant committee, the, our site plan review process that we worked so hard on was sent back to the planning board. It was not passed at the last town meeting. And so currently our site plan approval process is fairly weak. We're hoping at the next town meeting, town meeting members will approve it. Shout out to town meeting members, please do your homework and don't send it back again. But in case it's not guaranteed at this moment in time, because at this moment in time, our site plan approval process is fairly weak.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, sorry. Yeah, one more question, and then we, just we have so many people to speak.
Because if there's 2,500 people, they only, I think they only have to do one spot, parking spot per unit. And that's an extra 1,200 cars on the average. They figure 1.5 in Massachusetts per unit. There's an extra 1,200 cars. Where they going? And is there plans in the town to have additional parking? Of no.
The zoning has a requirement to park the needs of the project within the project site. It can't rely on public land for its parking. And as you probably know, Milton has separate regulations that prohibit overnight parking, except with special permit process. And that would still be in place as well.
So that is a policy question that the town will have to review. To get an overnight parking pass in the town is not a high hurdle. It's clear. So that has been my fear. Yeah, so my fear is that the overnight parking permit is going to be given out quite liberally. So my concern is there will be more parking on streets, which would then clog up the streets for emergency access vehicles.
Thank you.
Another reason why this is tough, law for Milton.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Kathleen, and then, yeah. We had a few other, yeah.
Sorry?
Kathleen O'Donnell, Precinct 7, Town Meeting Member. And I just had a quick question on you, Teal, because I wasn't trying, I was trying to understand the impact of not having a housing production plan. Is it just the one thing that the DPW, the state DPW yard is impacted by that failure?
Yes.
And do we know what's happening with our housing production plan?
Our staff is in the process of looking into a consultant who would update that.
I mean, as a person that sits on the Board of Appeals, I'd be really happy to have one.
And there's been a lot of growth in the town. I think people don't realize how many units have been created or have been approved. So we will be in the process of updating that. I think just the gap between Tim leaving and Cheyenne coming in.
So I think that's appointed by the Select Board. So I looked at, I went on the Housing Production Committee, and I think they're supposed to report to the Select Board. I think quarterly it was stated in their charge. And I went on to go find their minutes to their meetings, and I haven't been able to find it. And many of the people still listed on the committee, you know, in their capacity as a Select Board member are no longer on the Select Board.
That committee was disbanded, though, after the housing production plan five years ago. So that plan was adopted by the planning board and the Select Board. So it, I think it's something that.
Cheyenne, actually, why don't we look, Cheyenne, can I please speak to that? Do you know the status of?
But I have a special note, this one expired. We have been in talks with MAPC.
I can repeat that, Cheyenne says, Cheyenne says that the, it has recently expired and.
And so we just have the MAPC.
Cheyenne, come over and speak to Mike, just so the folks on, online can hear you.
So our housing production plan recently expired. We've been in touch with consultants such as MAPC. Currently, they don't have capacity, so we're looking into other consultants. We did see a former contract that they did with, I think, the town of Everett. So we are looking into expenses, consultants, and getting that in the works. So that's where we're at on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
As I said, I was just wondering whether that was the only interface between the housing production plan and this zoning.
Yeah, the regs, or at least the policy, is that, you know, publicly owned land is excluded, unless, and then there's a kind of a list of things. And one of those things in that list is, is it part of your housing production plan? And so, you know, I don't know if it ever really met the test, whether just because it was mentioned in the plan, right? But I think there's been some clarity, and we had conversations with HLC. And they were like, well, it's barely mentioned in the plan. It's already expired. And you're going to want to get some clarity from DOT about their intentions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's great. Carrie, you were, did you still want to speak? You had your hand up earlier.
Madam Chair.
Good, welcome.
Sorry, Carrie White, shift to get now.
Do you want to tilt that?
Tilt it this way, I'm height challenged, even sitting.
Thank you.
No problem. Chivalry is not dead.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. That was very helpful. I had one specific question. It is not in my neighborhood, as you all know. The Paper Mill site, I think I'm semi-familiar with it. And I, there were a couple of questions already. So if it's too redundant, Madam Chair, please tell me. But I was a little bit curious about it. Is that adjacent to where the Superfund site is? Where the river comes through? Is that the Tustin area? Sorry?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes, I believe it's in it or close enough to it that it's eligible for the overlay. There's a, there's a, yeah, it's a brownfield overlay site.
It's a brown, okay. When you said brownfield, I kind of assumed that's what you meant, but I wasn't entirely certain.
It would be great to see that developed and cleaned up.
I think so, too, yes. And the state has already been given a very large amount of money from the federal government over the past five-plus years to clean that up. And that would be quite a useful thing to be able to develop. Thank you, sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's great, good question. Yeah, thank you. Yes, with the, in the yellow sweater? Oh, well, sorry, I didn't recognize you from the back, the glasses on.
Thank you very much. My name is Matthew Walco, Precinct 1, 76 Hudson Street. My questions are for the consultant. On this 2025 Rapid Transit Community Plan table, I think it would be useful for those who are not as familiar with the process, for you to put in footnotes the actual acreage of the Milton Station East and Milton Station West. Down at the bottom, I'll have to change the font a little bit on the top, get more room. Also, I see that you've highlighted the changes in unit capacity from the prior plan that was approved by Town Meeting and then rejected at the referendum. I think it would be helpful, so folks didn't have to flip back and forth, to put in parentheses in the unit capacity column the change, whether positive or negative, from the prior plan. There were some comments earlier that this plan increases the number of, on unit capacity on the Elliott Street. And some folks would want to be able to know what that is more easily than having to go back and forth. Also, I see that two of the districts are less than five acres. And I know you've mentioned that there have been productive discussions regarding that. I don't see a textual basis in the final regulations to get credit for something less than five acres. And so my question to you, not to answer it tonight, is if the state rejects those two districts because they're less than five acres, who ends up losing when it comes back? Where do you stick the rest of those units? I do think that for this particular plan, if you look at the third option, where you've detailed how there's actually developable acreage within a half mile of the Fairmont Station. If you extended that district further north along the Truman Parkway, which is a divided four-lane highway, you could get it so that it's directly across the street from the Paper Mill site. And then you could use the Paper Mill site acreage, add it to a Truman Parkway acreage, and have one district. That's much bigger. And then you could drop the numbers on Elliott Street and perhaps keep them as they were, which would get more support for those who favor the larger plan and provide some backup in case the state screws this again and says these less-than-five-acreage districts don't count. So I think it would be useful to a planning board for you to model that and see what could be done and how many units could be basically jammed onto Truman Parkway. That would obviously upset some folks as, some folks were upset with the Randolph Ave new district, surprised by that. But it seems like it's a zero-sum game here. I am very much against the 25% as a legal requirement, but I can see that some people do favor that. And I do think that the planning board should have a couple more options to consider from its consultants.
Thank you so much. That's great. Appreciate that. Yeah, thank you for the comments. Yes, I, if you'd like to come, yeah. And for folks who would like to speak, if you want to move to the front, because we'll, or just make sure I see you because we want to move to the people on Zoom, so.
Good evening. Richard Shea.
Yeah.
First, I'd like to thank you people for the time you give in that route. And giving that kind of time per week is beyond the call of duty. So I thank you for your time. And I hope the people will keep this group together because you're working together on this. And get new people in here, it's going to be starting from scratch. But I, I wasn't going to speak, but I will say this. I believe, Mrs. DeGuy, you mentioned that the town does not help these contractors in their construction or anything like that just a few minutes ago. I thought you mentioned that, am I correct?
What I said was the town's not required to improve its infrastructure for a project. So if a project needed additional water capacity, sewer capacity, stormwater capacity, the town is under no obligation to provide it.
I see. Okay. That doesn't mean that they shouldn't. That has nothing to do with that.
Has nothing to do with should, it's just there is no obligation.
Well, I would recommend that the planning board, it might be years from now, I don't know, but pay attention to what is done to help these contractors with the town. I know people want to push this through, push this through, but mention on televised programs that you're looking out for the neighborhood, for the abutters, just mention that. I know some of you can't see these projects from your house, but I can. And I think you should notify the people just that you are paying attention to the abutters. Too late for me, but that you are paying attention to them. And I think they'd appreciate that. Most of the gentlemen up here tonight and ladies have mentioned that in a roundabout way. So just kind of mention that. And pay attention to what the town does for these contractors. It's amazing. I was blown away because it's my tax dollars.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, and thanks for your effort that you make. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joan Fall, 172 Granite Ave. And I'm a Town Meeting Member for Precinct 7. And I also didn't intend to speak tonight. But I, as I'm listening, I thank you all for all your hard work. I've watched a lot of the meetings. You guys really went into a lot of detail. My question, though, is, there's lots of building going around town, on around town, right? Is, do we, are we able to have, take credit for any of that within this program?
Yes, we absolutely are, yes. So yes, the 40B projects, those are, we've looked at those and some of the other development. We really have tried to put, zone where multifamily building, commercial development has already happened.
So we'll get credit for some of the building?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's something that I didn't realize, and I think that's important.
Yeah, we will.
Okay, we can't get credit for all of them because it has to be a five-acre minimum. So the 40B on Randolph Ave, 711 Randolph Ave, we're getting credit for. But the 40B across the street at 728 Randolph Ave, that's only on a one-acre site. Or the Brush Hill Road 40B is only a one-acre site. Amor Road is only a one-acre site. So we're not getting credit.
I saw.
So I'm glad you brought it up because we do have about 789 units coming in the pipeline that have been built and will be built. And that includes 36 units at Winter Valley, the 72 beds at the Memory Care. So there's all different types of units coming online in the next few years. And a lot of them, we're not taking advantage of.
Maggie, I think this, that 700 is, I'm not sure that those are all the units. I think that's the number on the SHI, which is the subsidized housing inventory, and some of those exist. So I don't think that's the accurate number for new, new units coming online.
Some of them are already bed built.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
But to Maggie's point, there's a ton of stuff coming down the pipeline that we, that we can't take advantage of.
Everywhere I go, there's building. And that's like, how much more can we really absorb? So I definitely support, I don't support the 25% plan because I don't think we can absorb it here in this town right now. But I thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you for speaking, yeah, good. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Hall, members of the board, thank you. My name is Kevin Crisim Jr. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 7. I reside at 62 Cortland Circle. I wear many hats in town, but tonight I speak to as resident of Cortland Circle. I had no intention of speaking here tonight. First, I want to thank you, Teal, members of the board, for putting this forum together. But after the previous comment that was made about keeping the Granite Ave South plan in a plan, I feel as though on behalf of my Cortland Circle, Thistle Ave, Riverside Ave, Whitman Road, and Granite Ave neighbors, that I must speak out and say to continue to stay the course and ever again keep Granite Ave South in any plan going forward. One of the words that has thrown around town quite a bit and was not heard tonight at most was the word of traffic. And as many people know, Granite Ave, one of the most weekday, highly congested, and at times dangerous roadways. Cortland Circle abuts that, as does Thistle Ave. So I'd like for you to expound tonight on some of the neighborhood input that you heard from my neighbors, the Granite Ave neighbors, and of East Milton as a whole, on why you took Granite Ave South out of the plan. And again, traffic is a huge impact. And I encourage anybody who hasn't had the pleasure of living on Granite Ave, abutting it or driving it every day, to see the impacts of traffic. And for the addition of 500 units adding on the neighborhood already would have been a disaster for my neighborhood. And it was mentioned about other precincts tonight that voted in favor of the MBTA Communities Act. I would remind the folks at home and the audience here that Precinct 7 voted 84% against the 25% plan, very much in part due to the fact of the Granite Ave South plan. So on behalf of my neighbors, Cortland Circle, Thistle Ave, Granite Ave, and the other streets that, yes, do exist, but don't get enough fanfare, we do exist, and we say no to the Granite Ave South plan. So again, I would ask you just to expound on the neighborhood input and more on why you kept Granite Ave South out. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it was, it was very clear to us following the referendum that having East Milton Square, Granite Ave North, and Granite Ave South was, was going to have a huge impact. The number of units, particularly Granite Ave South, I thought at one point, you know, it would have been nice to consider doing something there, but at a much, much smaller scale than what was proposed. And the impact of the combination of all three would have, would have really added a lot of additional traffic that we all know. East Milton Square is burdened by all the construction, the new developments that are coming down the pike. Because not only is a planning board, do we look at what is actually currently built, but we forecast what is coming and the development that we see coming. So we do know that those impacts, Granite Ave North, they have a different access path, so it would not have been access off of Granite Ave. So that was really important, and we felt like that's why we kept that in there. But we did, we found when we did the plan that we could look at alternative sites. And because it is, traffic is an issue. because it is, traffic is an issue. It's an issue everywhere in Milton, so everyone's impacted now, but particularly in your neighborhood, we're very sensitive that you can't get out of your street, so.
On a good day.
On a good day. Yeah. Good. Thank you.
I thank the board for the leadership. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, yes. Couple more, and then we'll go to our Zoom speakers.
I wasn't going to speak either.
Yeah.
And I'm basically trapped. My name's Jane Frisco. I'm at 399 Reed Still Road. I worked with you guys on a Zoom about the nursing home.
Yeah, can you push the, yeah, a little, yeah, a little closer.
Funeral home, the funeral home.
That's about the phone, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. I just heard about this from my sister-in-law that Randolph Ave was added, because I've been keeping track of it, but it hasn't been in my neighborhood.
Right.
And I actually walked that way the other day. So I, I know two of the projects have already been labeled for numbers, but how, do you just let them know they can build more? Is that what happens? Like, it's supposed to be 92 across the street, 711 Randolph Ave.
Right.
But now they can build more? Is that what happens? More units? Like, how do you get more numbers?
The zoning capacity, you mean, the zoning capacity that's there? We went slightly higher than what is there because we get, we get credit for those. Likely, they will never be built because the project is already under construction. But we will get credit, it will pull us a little bit more with our density numbers that we're trying to make.
I wasn't sure how that works. I know that they've been in the works, 92 and 47.
The developer's not going to, I'd come back and, I don't.
Well, the only concern about that, Meredith, I've just recently learned that the developer does own single-family houses on Randolph Ave. So if we increase the allowed units on that site, granted, they may not add them to the foundation that has already been built with the 92 units, but perhaps they could take advantage of the single-family houses on Randolph Ave.
That would be outside of those, the lot area.
It's not in the district.
It would be the district.
Just the district.
Yeah.
So that's the only thing I would be concerned about.
Yeah. It's not in the district, so.
And they would have to go through an approval process. It's not as if they could just start adding additional units to it.
Right.
So that approval process would include the Conservation Commission. That property was pretty tightly built already within the regulations for the wetlands. So I'm not sure that, that there's a lot of room for them to do it. And it's really, as Meredith said, taking advantage of something that's already in the pipeline and getting credit for it. Because if we didn't do that, then we'd be looking at zoning other places, and we'd be adding to the total number overall in the town.
Okay. And I know right beside the one across the street, 728, there's the farm, the old fourth farm, which I guess is going to be for sale, which I don't know how big that is, how many more. The question is really traffic, too, because I live on Reed Still Road, but it's kind of like a triangle, and then there's in the middle is Pleasant Street. And Pleasant Street has just gotten, I don't know why the neighbors aren't complaining all the time. Today, I saw East Bridgewater ambulance going down Pleasant Street, coming from the highway to get to Boston. They weren't going to Milton Hospital.
Wow.
So the traffic there is just unbelievable, and there's children passing. And the reason there's no snow plowing is because it's a state road. Milton Police, they're there, but they're not there very long, very often, and the state police are not on that street very often unless they're going to an accident at Chickatack or Reed Street.
Right.
So they need, I mean, when the state mandates, is they going to put more police on that very, very busy road? I think it's one of the busiest ones in town.
It is.
And again, I live on Reed Still. I have to sit to get out of my driveway, driveway, too, just to get on Reed Still Road.
I know.
So traffic, and it's a safety issue for people. And then if you're going to add two and three more, two, three more hundred people in cars and things, it's just, it's an accident waiting to happen.
Thank you very much. Tom, yeah, you come up. And I think after this speaker, then we'll go to Zoom.
Can I just ask how many are on Zoom? Cheyenne, got their hands raised?
Just one.
Just one?
Okay. All right, so we'll have the next two speakers, and then we'll go to Zoom. So that's great. Oh. Great.
Can I hand you? Sure. Thank you. Yep. Do you need one? Yeah, this is Tom Doherty of Adams Street, Milton. I have a handout because what I have to say couldn't be said in three, three minutes. So I hope you all take a look at that at some point. Just a little bit about me. I've lived in Milton for 40 years, and a long time ago, I was the managing editor of Harvard Law School's Journal on Legislation, where we looked at statutes and regulations as they are crafted and as they relate to each other. Also clerk for Stephen Breyer, who recently retired from the U.S. Supreme Court. Also litigated the GE case against the Attorney General, where the Attorney General tried to add to the public records law regulation, a regulation that was inconsistent with the statute, and defeated that, and therefore had to address that. What I had to say, though, very briefly, is the statute's wording governs over the regulation's wording. If there's any difference between the statute's wording and the regulation's wording, the statute's wording governs. To apply the regs, the words, the regulations, the words in the regulation must comply with the statute's words. And so it sort of rhymes, right? To, to apply, the regs must comply with that governing statute. Now, the regs here have a definition, the final regs have a definition of a subway station, Mattapan High-Speed Railline. That's not what the statute says. The statute says subway station, and that means subway station. It's that simple. And there are many, many, however, regulation provisions that are, that do comply with the statute, and they're very helpful. So it's been stated that the, the station plan is incomplete. The station plan is meant to be a beginning because you start with the station, and then you look at the regulations. And I won't go through it any further than that because of the time, you can read through, but that's the basic point. And that regulation, as it relates to the subway station, is, is in, is in conflict with very simple words that are used, okay? Lastly, here, it was mentioned during the presentation that the statute does not give you, gives, give anyone reasonable size. I'm quoting what was said. Yes, it does. Here's the wording of the 3A statute that the EO HLC must, must follow. Quote, "For the purposes of this section, this section, this section, 3A, a district of reasonable size shall," meaning must, "one, have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, subject to a couple of wetlands and sewage limitations, and be located not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station, if applicable." Okay, well, as to applicable, Milton has no subway stations within a half mile of its borders, and as you can see from those words, rapid transit is not mentioned there. By the way, the very same day that they enacted this statute, the legislature enacted a different statute having to do with voting that uses the word rapid transit. They know how to make a difference. You know, you can look that up. So what I'm saying is that the rapid transit is not authorized in Section 3A by its terms, nor is it applicable, you know, to the statute. But Milton does have developable land located within not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail stations. That statute wording, quote, "is applicable," close quote. And therefore, Milton really does, because of that, have commuter rail proximity and meets that requirement that does apply, and Milton must comply with it and develop such a zoning ordinance. That's, that's, that's my view, and that's how I read the statute. I'll sort of, I'll, I'll stop there, but it's also therefore very appropriate and possible that Milton can do more than that. It can comply with the 10% goal of the Select Board by both defining and, and building a plan for a commuter rail station-based district, one district of reasonable size, which, by the way, is a very helpful regulation as it relates to the commuter rail in that regard, with, if you have 100 acres or more, 100 acres or less, then the location of the actual units as, as planned, they can be anywhere. And consequently, the, that's the zero in their table. So consequently, that plan could both embrace the commuter rail adjacency, but also be able to be more spread out in terms of its application. So I'll, I'll stop there.
That's great, Tom. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I wish we had more time and just, we have two speakers left, and then we want to move to Zoom. Thank you very much.
Yes.
That's great.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Christo. I live at 17 Waldo Road. It's been a pleasure to be up here speaking with you all for the last two and a half years about this matter. A couple, I just want to hit on administrative base concerns, if I can, as a revolver on HLC, who I really feel should and is on hot, in the, in the hot seat, and then also design based zoning concerns that I might pose to you, Mr. Littell, if I have time. There's great legitimacy in crafting that solid 10% zoning claim. Just a few short months ago, we did learn from the SGC that they determine that all municipalities must abide by the law and that the AG has the ability to enforce compliance. Additionally, it was ruled that the regulations are ineffective because they weren't properly promulgated, and the guidelines that dictate both classification and zoning requirements requisite for compliance are part of those regs. Now, as Mr. Fahy had mentioned, he talked about, and I'm just prefacing this, sorry, the dubious rapid transit, misclassification of the trolley was outside of the scope of that court case, as Mr. Fahy had mentioned. This matter remains unaddressed, and Milton alone has legitimate reason to challenge the classification. So I would really ask, both this board and the Select Board, has Milton filed for declaratory judgment with respect to the classification argument to the court? HLC, and I strongly believe the administrative agency, further failed to recognize the trolley with its limited carrying capacity and no ability to transport passengers downtown is operationally inferior to rapid transit. Rapid transit provides generous carrying capacity over long distances without interruption directly to the downtown urban core for all passengers. The trolley is distinctly dissimilar. When HLC rebranded that top-tier classification of rapid transit in early 2022, just weeks before the draft guideline deadline for communities to give feedback, they failed to recognize two things, that the trolley is diminutive by nature, but also that Ashmont Station is the rapid transit terminus, and the trolley's just feeding into it. That it's fair, in my opinion, to call out HLC for these additional failures because it has significant consequence for this community. The irony as well, too, that HLC, after that draft guideline review, liberally reduced zone unit requirements for 90 communities of the 177, that's more than 50%, and of the 90 communities, 48 had reductions in zone unit capacity of 50% and greater. That's tremendous. Resolution of our dubious classification, whether by arbitration or litigation, needs to be resolved before we comply. You can never put a cart before the horse. So I think our focus needs to be there. And I think that a successful reclassification will yield both physical and financial benefit. Physical, obviously, because when we work through all these programs that you have up here, it is difficult to strike balance between Granite Ave, Elliott Street, et cetera. But there's financial benefit as well, especially at a time when our schools are financially burdened. The $2.1 million MBTA service surcharge that Milton has assessed would be one benefit because we've been tasked with having an unfair rapid transit label for these, for this period, and that savings would be passed on year to year. And we would then also be able, with compliance to your 10% plan, resume the state funding so that we can at least keep up with our expenses and get the funding from the state that we're entitled to.
Thank you so much.
I guess I won't get to the, if I have questions that I have for Mr. Littell.
Can you, can you send, I'm so sorry, because we are ready, but I know.
Thank you.
But if you send us your question, we can.
Come to the next meeting.
And come to the next meeting on the 24th.
We've got some requirement on that.
Yeah, on the 24th.
So what I don't like with the LHC quarter, if I can step back to Pete Jackson's, is that you increased, sorry, you increased the number of units in the neighborhood, and you also decreased the starting, the, you decreased, sorry, you decreased the square footers of the lot size. So the two of them together, I think, is a bit problematic, and I'd like to see degradations that are not so widespread, say 5,000 between the categories.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. Come on. All right. And then we'll go to our speaker on Zoom, and that's great. Thank you.
I'm the last one, okay. Matt, we're on 136 Elliott Street. I'll start out by saying thank you to you, Teal, thank you to the planning board for, for your hard work in getting us to this point. I'm glad that we have this opportunity to get together tonight. I also think this is a highly consequential, of course, to gather and assess what the board has done and plans to do, especially in light of the final regulations that came out on Monday. I'll throw in a little bit about myself. You know, going back to the beginning of my career, I interned for Pritzker Prize-winning architect at the start of my career, 25, 30 years ago, went on to the University of Pennsylvania, received a degree in architecture, also took coursework in planning while I was there. And in the past 20 years or so, I have worked in transit industry, designing as an architect stations for the MBTA, Womata, the MTA, it goes on and on, the Edmonton-Alberta Transit Station, Transit System. I know what I'm talking about, and the Mattapan Trolley is rapid transit. Now that, I, I know this question has been asked, but I think that the board has a responsibility to level with us as citizens. Not that these regulations have been issued by EO HLC, will the board continue to promote plans that don't correspond to them? Given the million dollars that we've lost so far, what is the plan to move forward? And is there a plan to handle consequences, including the possibility of another lawsuit from the state, or possibly the appointment of a special master to create his own plan for us when we lose control? Second, there are rumblings about a grand bargain with EO HLC or other legislative maneuvers to come to some kind of compromise, to relieve us of our responsibilities under the MBTA Communities Act, or to repeal the act altogether. It's worth noting that there, this has already been attempted and failed. I'm sure that opponents of the law will attempt this again, and that is their right. But that said, I believe that the sensible thing to do is to pass a plan that meets the requirements of this entire statute as intended, including the regulations, until our obligation officially changes. We should comply with the law as it stands, and we can revisit this in the future if and when changes are made. Third, regarding the approaches that deny that we have a subway, the basis of their existence, we, we need to talk about the wording of the law, and it's not just a subway, it's subway stations. And by that logic, you know, we don't have subway stations, but neither does Malden, neither does Medford, neither does Newton, neither does Revere, neither does Brookline. All of these communities have rapid transit stations that exist above ground. Were they all intended to be exempted from this law, I think is a fundamental question that you have to ask yourself. Was it only intended for Cambridge, Somerville, Chelsea, and Revere? Does Milton have it right? And by extension, have all these communities made a big mistake? I think the answer is no. While these comments address specific concerns, I don't want to lose sight of the big picture that shapes all of my comments. At the end of the day, this is about increasing access to housing. It's about fairness. It's about Milton's role in our regional economy. It's about beginning to untether our zoning from its segregationist and racist history. While fair housing laws ensure that explicit racism, religious discrimination, and discrimination by family makeup, among other things, are no longer allowed by law, they used to be, economic discrimination remains perfectly legal. And through my years of discussion with this community, I've found that it's actually preferred among some of my townspeople that we keep it that way. So I'd look to, like to push back against this, and as a town.
Three minutes?
Do our part to barriers to homeownership that have been created and placed throughout our.
Give you three.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Okay, do we still have the one person on Zoom still?
Six or seven?
Okay. Invite them to speak.
Two speakers. The speaker had five minutes and four and a half minutes.
One of them asked to speak for longer, and I told, that was one of the people who I said could speak longer, so.
You got a lot of time, right?
I think I think.
No, I actually did.
Okay. All right.
But you got up twice, right?
Okay, let's, we're going to wrap this up.
Didn't get up twice?
Okay.
No, I didn't get a lot of time.
Okay.
Ask your staff personnel.
Okay, let's.
Oh, staff person?
Bring our person in on.
Function proper. So be careful.
Okay.
You don't know the answer.
Let's go. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, we have one last person, too.
So one last person, Ada Rose Marin.
Okay. Can invite Ada in?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Ada Rose Marin, 32 Columbine Road, Precinct Two Town Meeting Member. Thank you for having this session tonight. I really appreciate this opportunity and to hear the latest plans and directly from. I really appreciate this opportunity and to hear the latest plans and directly from you, Teal, about this. I just agree with my neighbor, Mr. Jackson, in concerns about overburdening the Elliott Street corridor with this plan. And I'm wondering whether you have considered other sites that could share some of the burden? And in particular, I'm wondering about whether there could be some type of hybrid plan put together between the rapid transit areas that you've designated for one of the other plans, along with the, the areas that are designated in the current 25% plan, to reduce some of the burden on the Elliott Street corridor.
Do you want to try it?
The short answer is yes. There's always another option. We've, I don't know, we're on option Z, I think, right now. So, yeah, I think there's definitely a way to look at that. You know, there were some other districts that we removed, they weren't working very well. Over the last two months, with guidance from the planning board, we've been looking at, you know, ever more new, new districts, including, you know, for instance, the Paper Mill Site. I don't know if we have an obvious candidate for like a brand-new district. I feel like we've looked at those pretty carefully, but there are ways to redistribute the density between the districts that we have. I, I will add, just, just a gem, because a lot of people have been talking about the Elliott Corridor and the fact that some of the numbers have gone up since the 2023 plan. I will add that it is the least, the three tiers are the least dense districts in all of the districts that we're considering. So they're, they're, they're below the 15 units an acre, they're in the range of 11 or 10. And it's not completely inconsistent with, you know, some of the density that's already there. So I just needed to mention that.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. I appreciate that. And, and just one last comment is, when you're talking about the trolley, the Mattapan Trolley, that, that trolley is the reason that many of us moved to this neighborhood, and I, I have to take offense at you referring to it as a crazy trolley. It's a beloved trolley for many of us in our neighborhood, and I think it deserves the respect that it has for us and the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was quoted by Ron Mariano.
That was.
I don't know who Ron Mariano is.
He's the top House Democrat in the state.
I, I think the point, though, that it should be well-taken, that there's a lot of folks who have disparaged the trolley, and I've heard from other people who live in the neighborhood, just as Ms. Rose Maron does, that they specifically picked that part of Milton because of the trolley. And in fact, this planning board, several years ago, when the MBTA was talking about doing something else with the trolley, the planning board in Milton, the Select Board in Milton, all supported reinvestment and further investment in the trolley because we saw it as an asset to the town. And I personally still view it as an asset to the town of Milton and would like for us to continue to advocate for its investment in it so that it works better than it does today.
Yeah, I don't think anybody has said it's not an asset. I've questioned, is it a $2 million a year asset? That's what we pay every year to MBTA. I love the trolley. I grew up taking the trolley. My kids take the trolley. I think it's 100% asset. I just don't think it's worth $2 million a year, and I don't think it's reasonable to expect us to zone for 2461 units. My question, though, is, and I don't know how to say this without causing a little controversy, but do you think the Elliott Street neighborhood and Precinct 1 and 2 supported the plan originally because it wasn't in their neighborhood? And now that it is in their neighborhood, they're pushing back? And that's problematic for us because now we're even more confused. So from a planning perspective, this is a transit-oriented development, which is supposed to be around transit and amenities, and the Elliott Street Corridor has that. And then at Town Meeting, all the, I don't know all, but a good portion of Town Meeting members from Precinct 1 and 2 voted for it. And then during the referendum, a lot of the residents in those neighborhoods voted for it. So it is causing some confusion now, especially for me, because now we are looking at other neighborhoods that are outside good planning areas. You know, we're looking at neighborhoods that provide ecological benefit, you know, I'm on the Climate Action Committee, our greenhouse gases are increased, so it's just, it's problematic.
I don't know, I, I can't speak for people who voted one way or another or support one way or another. But I think what I heard tonight is people are concerned about the increased density in the Elliott Street Corridor over what was there in the 2023 plan. And, you know, part of why some people support compliance has to do with the fact of grant money and the financial position the town is in, in spending money to, on legal fees and on lost grants. I, I think some people feel as if we, we should be compliant so that we aren't spending and losing money. I think what you've said, though, is trying to, is, it's very close to pitting neighborhood against neighborhood. And I am really concerned about pitting neighborhood against neighborhood. I think the board has worked to be sensitive to all the neighborhoods. It's why we've, I've advocated for months and months and months to come out and have a public forum, because we've been looking at adding some density to Elliott Street Corridor since last summer. And I said, we need to get out to the public and let them know about this. We've been looking at alternative districts since last summer, and we still have, this is the first we've come out to the public to show that. And we have now a month left. We should have had a forum like this months ago, like I suggested. And we can do what we can in the next month to address the comments that we've, we've heard, but we've put ourselves in this position ourselves.
And my other question is the status of pursuing an unfunded mandate determination. So that has, we haven't talked about that. You know, Middle Borough, they filed for, for, to the court for a determination, and then that's when the HLC came and negotiated with them. So I think one of the things we should be doing as a town is seeking that determination because we're in a $10 million situation and we're looking at a $10 million override. I think it would be negligent if we did not pursue that. So I'm really advocating for us to do that.
All right. I think this is a good point. I think we, everyone, I just am so grateful for everyone who has come and has spoken this evening and shared your, your thoughts with us, and we'll take this all back and be able to discuss it at our meeting on the 24th. But most importantly, I just want to thank Matthew and thank you for all the good work that we've done. Thank you all. Good evening. Nice. Do we have to adjourn? Do we have an motion to adjourn?
I'll make an motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Sorry, second. All in favor?
Aye.